All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome you here this evening. If I can call the council meeting, the committee of the whole to order and have approval of the agenda, please.
Salute.
Okay. No, that's right. And so, the item for this evening is a presentation with the Trade Commissioner Service and Ms. Marilyn McLean is here, Denton Head of Office and Trade Commissioner. So, I would like to turn it over to you, please. And welcome.
Well, thank you very much. There we go. I'm on. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the chamber and also to clients. This is a really awkward setup. Could I ask you people who are my clients to maybe move in one spot so I'm not turning my back on you? That's, I feel very badly, this, and I'm not being picked up by the microphone either. Okay, here. If I can see the clients and see the chamber, it makes it a lot easier. So, thank you very much for the invitation to speak tonight. I'm the Trade Commissioner for Vancouver Island and I also cover for the Pacific region, which is British Columbia and Yukon, ocean technology and marine industries. So, that's shipping boats, things like that. I have been in the Victoria office for four and a half years and prior to that, I was in the Vancouver office for two years. While I was there during the Olympics, I covered green building. So, that was forest industries, building and construction, architectural and engineering services. Prior to that, I was our Senior Trade Commissioner to Pakistan, accredited to Afghanistan. So, as a Senior Trade Commissioner, I had a staff of seven and offices in Islamabad, Lahore, Karachi and Kabul. And then, prior to that, I was in Ottawa doing lots of different things. I was hired by the Department of Foreign Affairs to set up Canada's international education marketing program in 1993. Believe it or not, Canada did not recognize education as a sector, a commercial sector. And so, I was extremely happy to see that after, must have been about 20 years, some of the lines that I had been writing for consumption of the department on why the education sector was a very important sector and should be treated the way all the other sectors are, that it was actually now recognized as a priority sector. So, that was very gratifying. But, what I want to do tonight is, okay, this one? Nope. This one. Nope. What do I point it at?
It's not going to work now. You can just nod over to me and I'll move it for you.
Okay. Yeah. So, what I wanted to do tonight is very quickly go through the services of the Trade Commissioner Service and then to speak a little bit about CAN export. And I believe that everybody has the paper that was handed out about CAN export? You got that? Okay, good. Oh. So, oh, all right, maybe. So, the Trade Commissioner Service has been around for a very long time. The very first Trade Commissioner was sent to Australia in 18, what was it, 1897, believe it or not? And what we have is a, I think, hit it three times, or, yeah, there, stop. Okay, what we have is a network of 900 Trade Commissioners around the world in 175 cities and a client base of 13,500. Our client base is the companies that we put into our database. And we moved to a new database several years ago. So, if a company was in our old database, like Canada Signals, unless the company had done three service requests in the last year, they weren't uploaded to the new database. So, if you're with a company that used to work with the Trade Commissioner Service and you haven't used the service in a long time, please get in touch with us. One of the things that is, most people don't know, is that the majority of our 900 Trade Commissioners are not Canadians. They are hired in-country. They're what we call locally engaged. So, when I was the Senior Trade Commissioner in Pakistan, all of my staff were Pakistani or Afghans. And the good thing about that is they speak the language, they know the culture, they usually, when they're hired by the Canadian Embassy or High Commission, stay with us for a very long time. Canada has a very good reputation of treating their locally engaged staff well, paying not the top of the ladder, but usually in typical Canadian fashion, about the middle of the ladder. And so, when a Trade Commissioner starts working for the Government of Canada, they will often stay for an extraordinarily long time. The staff that I had, had anywhere from 17 to 38 years with the Government of Canada. Okay. So, oh, maybe hit it again. Those dots are where we have offices. This is the first time, oh, yuck. This is the first time that I've ever used this deck and so, eh, it's awful. Okay. All right. Those little dots were where all our offices are located. And the easiest way to find where we have an office around the world is to go, to find a Trade Commissioner and it's all listed there. So, a lot of people will go and send an email directly to the Trade Commissioner in the country where they are looking to export. The problem with that is that if the company isn't already in the database, the Trade Commissioners abroad are supposed to send that request back to the Trade Commissioner in Canada to say, "Is this really a Canadian company? Is this a client of ours?" Because anybody, anywhere with a Gmail address, a Hotmail address, could be disguising themselves as a Canadian company to get our services because our services are free. So, they're very valuable, even though they don't cost you anything. But, they cost the Canadian taxpayers a lot of money to pay our salaries. So, we want to make sure that we know who the companies are, we know what you're doing, we know why you want to get into that market. Because the last thing you want is a Canadian company to get into a foreign market and make a colossal mistake and go bankrupt. So, we're trying to avoid that by doing our preparation, encouraging the companies to get in touch with your local Trade Commissioner here in Canada. Because oftentimes, we can give you some advice, lead you to a partner who might be able to provide you with some service. You may not be quite ready for exporting, even though you've got that fabulous order from some foreign country and you want to ship it off, but when you ship it, it doesn't get through customs and your ice cream is melting at the border. So, you don't want that to happen. Okay. So, our clients, okay, let's hope, try again. Oh, yes, they are small and medium-sized companies, must be established in Canada, do business abroad, or are planning to do business abroad. We do work with companies who haven't exported yet, but it's really important that the companies have researched their market. I get phone calls, "Hi, I'm Company X and I want to export to Asia." Well, excuse me. Asia is a continent, could you tell me, what country in Asia do you want to export to? "Well, I don't know, you tell me." I don't do that. I expect the company to have done their homework. So, I'll send the company to websites and say, you know, "Go do your homework." Because I'm not there to tell companies what to do, I'm there to give companies advice, to help them to prepare. It's really good to have a business plan. It's good to be strategic about what it is that you plan to do. Because if you're making lots of money in Canada and you've got some additional capacity to export and your senior management are keen and you have researched and selected your target market, then you're quite liable to be successful. If you haven't done those things, you may be setting yourself up for a fall and the last thing we want is companies that fail. So, next. And again? Ah, those are our four services. So, preparation for international markets is, in essence, what we, the Trade Commissioners who are here in Canada, do. We work with the companies, try to comment on their business plan, ask some questions, make sure they've thought through the details. It's also important that senior management of the company be involved because sometimes there'll be some super gung-ho young person who's now the International Business Development Officer and they'll spend lots of time with the Trade Commissioner and we'll put lots of effort into it and then, when they go to their senior management, they say, "No, we don't want to spend that money on travel." Ooh, well, that's wasted the poor business development officer's time, but also the Trade Commissioner's time and the taxpayer's money. And we don't want to waste taxpayers' money. Market potential assessment, that is where I would introduce, as the Trade Commissioner here in Canada, your company to a Trade Commissioner in the market that you have researched and selected. And you may have some questions about, "How is my product or service going to fare in your market? What are some of the challenges of your market? Here's how I plan to enter your market because it was really successful when I was going into the United States. Is it going to fly in Asia or Japan or wherever?" So, you have questions that are best answered by a Trade Commissioner in that market. So, that's why it's called market potential assessment. Get an assessment before you jump on that plane to go to that trade show and find out that your product is overpriced and it's the wrong color. Qualified contacts, we both do. Sometimes, the people that a company is looking for may be a contact here in Canada or in British Columbia. So, I can suggest some of our partners, like Business Development Bank of Canada, Export Development Canada, for the ag sector. I was just explaining that in agriculture, it is the only sector where Agriculture-Agrifood Canada deal with the companies when they are in Canada. And then, when the companies go abroad, it's the Trade Commissioners who work at the embassies who deal with those companies. Now, I'm a bit of an anomaly because there's no Agriculture-Agrifood person here on the island. So, if I am out and about and going to visit an area and there are Agriculture-Agrifood companies in that area, I will do the site visit. I will share my report with the Agriculture-Agrifood people and they go, "Oh, thank you very much, we never get over to Vancouver Island." And I say, "Yeah, I noticed." So, that's how I coordinate with them. When I introduce a company in the Agriculture-Agrifood sector to a Trade Commissioner abroad, it's in our database email or e-filing system. So, I work both sides of the fence on that one. Qualified contacts might be somebody at the province. There's a lot of duplication and overlap. The province has six, has offices in six countries abroad and they do on the trade side exactly what we do. So, maybe, given what your company's trying to do in that market, it might be the provincial person who is organizing a trade mission or finding and have, seeking investors. The one thing that we, as Trade Commissioners, do when we are abroad seeking investment, we are federal. Therefore, if a Trade Commissioner abroad finds an investment opportunity, it goes to Ottawa. From Ottawa, it goes to the provinces. All the provinces are competing with each other. So, from the provincial, from the province, it then goes hopefully to municipalities because municipalities all compete with each other. So, you have to kind of understand, okay, where does what I'm wanting or doing fit into this big mosaic of federal, provincial, municipal, who's doing what with whom, where? And that's what I call pathfinding and I try to help a company sort out that path, find the right person that can help them with what it is they're trying to undertake. Problem solving is the one we hope to avoid by doing the first three. But, people come to us with problems and we try to resolve them as best we can. If however, you come with a problem, I shipped purple widgets to China and they refused to pay me. Well, I can ask the Trade Commissioner in China to call up the purple widget importer and say, "I think there's been a misunderstanding because you owe X amount of money to this Canadian company and they haven't received the payment yet." Sometimes, the Chinese company will say, "Oh, yeah, you know, it's in the works," or, "Oh, we were disputing on the price and oh." There might be a way of saving face which resolves the problem. On the other hand, they may say, "Yeah, sue us." At which point, we can only suggest lawyers because we can't get involved in a legal dispute. But, we try to resolve the problems before they get to legal disputes. Okay. And so, we're part of a, it used to be called a continuum. I see they're calling it an export process now, but quite interesting that it's the same little columns that were there 20 years ago. So, in this continuum, there's lots of different things that you need to do before you get to the very final column, which is the market entry. And you'll see that on a federal level, there's a number of initials there. So, you've got the Business Development Bank of Canada, you've got the Trade Commissioner Service, Export Development Canada and Canadian Commercial Corporation. It's important, based on what you're trying to do abroad, that you know who's who and which services would fit what you're trying to do. Not to say that this is the be-all and end-all because there are lots of provincial partners that aren't listed there. There's lots of private sector banks that aren't listed there. That's just the list of federal ones. But, that continuum is important to have considered, all of those different things as you get into your export plan, your international business development plan. Okay. So, for technology companies, this is a really important thing in Canada. We have an awful lot of niche companies that invent amazing technology. So, in the last, oh, I guess it's maybe six years, we've established these Canadian Technology Accelerator Centers. And so, companies who are startups, they're in technology, they're at the point where it would make sense for them to actually spend time in the market, in Silicon Valley, San Francisco, Boston, where else do we have them? A number of different places, United States, France, and there's one in India as well. And so, these accelerator centers are very much like Viatec in Victoria, where the companies go in and they can have mentors and they are in the market, they get to meet who's who. It's a really good way of establishing yourself if you're in the technology sector. You have to apply, go through the hoops, there's no money involved, you've got to pay your own way, but there's a lot of service and people that can help you if that's what your company is doing and needs that kind of assistance. Okay. And then, these are the benefits of the Canadian Technology Accelerators. And it's all on the website, by the way. Lot more information than has just been cut and pasted into these slides. Okay. So, CAN export. This program was announced by my minister earlier this month. A couple of the, now, if you take a look at your list, it is basically, I just did a grab from the website. Things to remember about CAN export are, you must meet the criteria. If you, if, you know, if you don't have an annual declared income of between $200,000 and up to $50 million, you don't meet the criteria. If you are trying to get into a market where you have already made sales in the last 24 months, you cannot get funding from this program for that market. And for us, the word market means foreign country. And yes, the United States is one market. It's, if you're selling in the west, on the West Coast and you want to use this program to go to the East Coast, nope, won't work. If however, you have made sales in the United States and now what you want to do is to explore another country, then, and let's say it's Europe, you need to select one country. You can't say, "Well, I want to go to Europe." No, you have to select a country. And some companies find this very difficult, but it, they made up the rules, I didn't, I wasn't consulted. I'm just interpreting them for companies. And so, in reading what the rules are, it gives you a good idea of what the program is all about. If it meets what you are planning to do, okay, and I can't emphasize enough, it is important that you have a plan. What is your five-year plan? This is a five-year program. It's $50 million over five years. That's a lot of money. You may be starting to sell in the United States, so you can't use the plan to go into a trade show in the U.S. But, as you are successful in the U.S., then your plan is to go, let's say, Mexico. Yes, you can apply to this program for Mexico. And what the program does, it's an application online and it's got a lot of things that you have to fill out. And I think there's one more slide on this one. Yeah, there it is. Key points to remember. As it is forcing you to fill out the form, it is actually helping you develop a strategic plan. So, even if you do it just for the exercise, it is, it's quite useful. It's a good learning tool. It is an excellent tool, given that your project has to be between $20,000 and $200,000. If you're approved, it will reimburse half your costs with a whole lot of caveats as to what they will reimburse. But, so you can't, if you, if you're planning to go to a little trade show and it's only going to cost $10,000, don't apply. The criteria says, it has to be a plan to be spending over $20,000 and under $200,000 and half of what it is that you spend, based on the criteria that they have there, will be reimbursed. So, other key points are, plan ahead, send your application in, even though they say that they'll have a response to you 25 working days, that's five weeks, give or take Easter being in there, other holidays being in there. I'm a bit concerned about the timeline. So, I am counseling companies to, if they have something they want to go to and it's in April, hmm, that might be a little tight. Think long-term, think maybe next year, in the summer. I don't know. I mean, think of a strategic plan that you can then apply to the program, get the application approved. Because once the application is approved, then whatever expenses you incur that meet the criteria will be reimbursed. But, if you buy your airplane ticket to go to that trade show before you are approved, eh, it won't count. So, um, and I think that's the end of my, oh, there may be one more. Oh, yes, this is, so this is who we are. The regional offices in Vancouver, all of the other Trade Commissioners are located in Vancouver. That's only some of the Trade Commissioners, but they're the ones that cover sort of the technology. We also have a Trade Commissioner covering mining, ocean and gas. I think there's 12 of us in total. So, we divide the business up into 12 sectors and then everybody's assigned a sector. Some sectors have more Trade Commissioners assigned to them because they're really large, like sustainable technology and information communication technology. Other sectors, like consumer products, which unfortunately is not a priority sector, and as I was saying to Dana, wine, beer and spirits, not a priority sector. And that poor fellow also has sustainable technology. So, some people are a bit run off their feet. I do encourage companies, if they are going to get in touch with the Trade Commissioner Service, start by sending an email. In the email, give us tombstone information. Name, title, company name, telephone number, website, physical address. Okay, I need that to put you in the database. After you've given me that information, or anybody, then, what, a little profile of your company. I mean, it could be a cut and paste from your website, but sometimes your website is explaining you as a company to a customer. We're not customers, we're bureaucrats. So, explain your company to a bureaucrat who may know nothing about what it is you do. I mean, they may not know anything about your particular little niche. So, in very simple language, no acronyms, please, explain what you do. And then, what do you want us to do for you? And by sending an email that gives us that information, it makes it easy for us to put your company in the database if it isn't already there, to do a service request to one of our colleagues abroad. Oh, I want to go to Korea for a trade show and I've selected this one and it's on these dates and I'd like the names of some companies to, that I would meet with at this trade show. And a typical company I am looking for does this, X. Wow, I could just send that straight off to the sector officer in Seoul. I don't put your company into the database. I get my key performance indicator and you've just been introduced to the Trade Commissioner in Seoul who, and I must say, I'm very impressed with the responses that most of the Trade Commissioners provide. They will often go a great distance to provide information, background information, doing business in my country, all sorts of information for you to help you prepare. And you may decide at the end of getting all of this information, whoops, it's not the country for me to go to. Well, you know, that's not a bad answer. It's better for you to have done your preparation at home before you've spent a lot of money getting on a plane, ending up in Seoul, finding that, oh, you know, what I'm trying to do in this country doesn't work, or I'm not prepared, or I don't have my costing yet, or my colors are all wrong. So, it's good to do that preparation in advance and that's what we're here to do, to help, to help you do. How are we doing for time?
Doing fine.
So, I was just going to say, now, now the floor is open for questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Denton. It was quite informative and I think the District of Tsukas and our business community is always looking for opportunities. So, this was really informative tonight and thank you for coming. So, I'll open it up to council. Any questions for Ms. Denton? Yes, Counselor Casper.
So, where would a company have, like, go for, like, a food product? Would they go through your office if they were wanting to export a food product that's processed or is that?
I recommend that, you know, they can go directly to Agriculture-Agrifood Canada.
Okay.
And everything's on the web. They're, you can look it up and there's, there's a list of who the officers are with their email addresses and phone numbers. Because if the company is new to export, then sure, I can put them in the database, but the next thing I would do would be to introduce them to one of the Agriculture-Agrifood people. And chances are, the company may not, not And chances are, the company may not, not be ready for export. I mean, they may need to do a lot more work before they really are ready for the Trade Commissioner Service.
So, you know, just with that, that new or, or proposed trade agreement, so, you know, does your organization assist them in, in, in companies learning more about any barriers that, that would hamper them going to certain market areas or?
It's, it's a good idea to ask the question. You know, "I want to export my purple widget to Korea. Are there any barriers to exporting purple widgets to Korea?" And that would go to the trade commissioner in Korea who would know what those barriers are.
Well, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but because of that new agreement, you know, the Asia?
The, the free trade agreement with Korea, yes.
Yes, but it's sort of with other countries too.
Yes, we have free trade agreements with, I've forgotten how many because they keep signing more.
So would that actually increase?
Yes.
Your, your workload of your organization potentially? Because there's more opportunities?
Well, the, the whole reason that Canada signs free trade agreements is to encourage free trade. And so it's a way of, of getting rid of very high tariffs and other such impediments. But every, you know, every agreement has incredible nuances and I'm not an expert in free trade agreements. Those are my trade policy people. I'm called trade promotion, so.
Right, right.
And so it's a good idea to ask the question because the, the, the trade commissioner in Korea or where else we have, Costa Rica, Jordan, you know, there's a whole list of them on the website. They will, they will be very familiar with what is in the agreement and what was excluded from the agreement. Because free trade sounds wonderful, but there's always little, you know, exclusions and those sorts of things. So you, you, you have to be an expert to know the, the nuances. And why it's important for a company to explain who they are and what they do is that a general question is impossible to answer unless the trade commissioner knows specifically what it is that you're trying to export. So that's why it's really important to explain to us who you are, what you're doing. Don't just send us the website because, as I said, the websites are usually set up to sell to your customer. They don't give us the granularity about your company that we're looking for.
Right. My last question is, so I'm, I'm assuming that the federal and, and the provincial government for British Columbia, that they, they would have, do they have shared offices or in the same locations or different locations?
To my knowledge, the provincial officers are not in the embassy. But I, you know, ah, they might be in one or two places, I'm not aware. I know that Export Development Canada, which is the Crown Corporation, they have their staff in our embassies.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. That's great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So I, I just to, to clarify, the, this is a five-year program then? So would, would there be opportunity at the end of five years for it to be renewed?
You'll have to ask the next Prime Minister.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, and, and I guess, I guess in terms of locally, you're here tonight to provide the presentation and the website, is, is there any information that is going out to, like, our chamber? Or is, is, is the process to, for us to pass that along? I'm just wondering how active your office is in, in getting this information out to the business community?
I, I am, I am an office of one. I have no, no marketing materials. This deck was actually prepared by one of the staff in, in Vancouver because we didn't even have a deck. But I received a deck this morning.
Okay.
But I'd already sent this one to her, so I didn't want to make more work for her, but it really lasts. Anyway, he did, he did, he did a really good job. I, I take my hat off to this fellow because this program was announced and he was in Ottawa on training and he's on loan to us from the province and, you know, he, he did a real bang-up job, at least getting that much done. And this, this deck actually, he had designed because they were doing a presentation. The, the four names on the left-hand side were doing a presentation at the B C I T, B C Information Technology Center.
B C I T.
The promotion of this program is, is non-existent other than? Me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I appreciate what you're saying, it's, it's very new, it's sort of just out the gate and so finding ways to, to share this information. I'm just wondering, we have this deck. Do you feel that the other deck could come to us as well or do you think this one here is sufficient? Just looking at what we can put out there to our business community and share with them.
My suggestion is, the best thing to put out to the public is the web link because on it is the, the guide. It's very well-prepared website. I'm, I'm, I'm quite pleased to say it's a good website. It has the guidelines, frequently asked questions, and the application form. And one thing that I learned, because one of my clients was asking, "Could you have a PDF of the application form?" So I went to the CAN Export Organization box, which is one woman in Ottawa answering all the emails. And she came back and said, "No, we don't have a PDF of the application. They're worried about non-clients getting it." I don't know. But when someone in a company starts the application process, they can share their spot on the web with other people. So you can have more than one person in a company working on the application.
So again, I just, clarifying, because I'm just thinking in terms of companies and sort of the user-friendly idea. Often I think if, if people or groups of people can have sort of a, a quick glance at what's there, sort of like the current deck you have, then as you've got here in terms of a website at the end, so why, are, is it, are we okay to share this, this deck?
Everything that's in that deck is, is public information.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Pearson?
Thank you for your presentation and I see there's some members of the Chamber of Commerce here as well. So I think it's, to, to, to the mayor's point is, is the sharing of the website and I, and at least knowing that it's out there, I mean, it's a starting place, you know, and we can encourage businesses when they come forward of, at least, at least there's somewhere to go, right? So, so good. Anyways, thank you for your presentation.
And just one last comment and, and that is, I learned some time ago here that Sook was one of the first communities to export to Chile and they exported crop traps, if I remember correctly the story. And that was back in the 50s, so just a little bit of information that really today, we may not realize what happened decades ago in terms of business and export out of Sook. So again, thank you for your presentation and look for any public input or any questions from the public if you'd like to come forward. If you could come to the mic, please, and, and just state your name, please. Thank you.
Brian Mooney. I'm, I'm a little bit interested at the bottom end that $20,000 should be set as the minimum for the entry level because I've been in a number of trade shows and even with the reduced value of the Canadian dollar, it would have been impossible for us to spend $20,000 for two people. And I'm thinking particularly in terms of the, the Brussels Seafood Show, a five-day show, even after you've paid your entry fee, samples and whatever. Yeah, $20,000 was, was beyond what we needed.
I'm happy. I think the reason for the, the, you know, minimum being that large is that what we want with this program is that companies are thinking longer term strategically. So your plan is to go to the Brussels Seafood Show, find a distributor, and then maybe go back and meet with the distributor and then negotiate a, some kind of an agreement. I mean, it, it, it needs to be a bigger plan than just, "Oh, I'm going to do one trade show." That's my guess as to why they put that in there.
If you're successful, you're going to meet one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mooney. Any other questions from the public?
Sorry, I also didn't want to emphasize this too much, but those in the Agriculture-Agrifood sector are not, are, cannot apply to this program because agri-marketing is the program which is very similar to this one for that sector. So you, I would suggest applying to their program because you don't qualify for this
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Ms. Denton. It certainly is appreciated that you've come out here on a Tuesday evening out to Sook and thank you again. Come again, yes. Okay. If I can get an adjournment. Okay, Counselor Berger?